Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands, to the beautiful peninsula, united by a bridge of steel, where an equal opportunity and justice to all is our ideal.
Yes. Go blue, go green.
Okay, at this time, Sandy, we could have the oath of office.
You can sit right there.
Matt and Sheri.
Me?
Yeah, you have to be standing again, too.
Oh, I have to get reinstated.
Did you forget?
You didn't know?
Just say, "I will or I do."
The best do we get married, don't we?
It's not going to do with this. I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Councilman, according to the law. House President. Please proceed.
Welcome here.
The doggy talk, right? Prevailed.
I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Mayor of the City of Cadillac, according to the law.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Wolfisle?
Here.
Keith?
Here.
Mayor Falcons?
Here.
And at this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion, please.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask if you do come up for public comment, if you would please state your name, and then also write your name and address for Sandy. It would be greatly appreciated. And if you could have your comments down to three minutes, we would appreciate that, too. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. And we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we just had the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on December 21st.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Second. Go.
I'll second, please.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
And that takes us to some appointments this evening.
Yes, at this time, we need city council member appointments, both regular and alternate, to the Board of Review. This will be for a one-year term to expire on January 7th, 2017.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the city council, just wanted to add, this board meets approximately four times a year. There's a couple of meetings in March, I believe, one in July and one in December.
Councilmember Keith, is that something you would... I can nominate you for that job?
You could do that.
Do we make a motion, then?
Yes.
So, I would like to make a motion to appoint councilmember Keith as the regular member, and, uh-oh, who wants to be the alternate?
Who was the alternate before?
Councilmember... former councilmember Melima.
Okay.
Would that be something you could do, Matt?
Most certainly.
Okay, and councilmember Wolfisle, as the alternate member to the Board of Review for a one-year term to expire on January 7th, 2017.
Support. I appreciate both of you stepping up to do that. It's really hard for me to do, and I notice for councilmember Shippers to working during the day.
Absolutely.
We're available. Thank you.
We're glad. We're glad. Sandy? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next recommendation is regarding the reappointment of the city manager to the local development finance authority, the building authority, and the Brownfield redevelopment authority.
Okay, we're going to need a motion for a four-year term.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of the city manager to the LDFA, or the Local Development Finance Authority, for a four-year term to expire on December 3rd, 2019, and to the Cadillac Building Authority for a three-year term to expire on August 31st, 2018, and the Brownfield redevelopment authority for a three-year term to expire on May 19th, 2018.
Support.
You can be busy.
Somebody's keeping track of those expiration dates. Yeah, it really is.
It is important. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Being recommended to reappoint Wayne Fox to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on June 3rd, 2019.
I'll make the motion to approve the reappointment of Wayne Fox to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on June 3rd, 2019.
And I'll support that.
And did we talk to Wayne? Okay, good. Just want to make sure. Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, and that moves us now into the public hearing that we have this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This evening is the... This evening, we are hosting the public hearing on the planned unit development zoning language. John Wallace, our development coordinator... Development director, rather, will be introducing this item. He did leave at your tableside copies of an amended form of what's being proposed, as well as of a slideshow, according to... John? You can take that. Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Good evening. At your... I believe, two meetings ago, you did the introduction for the mixed planned unit development zoning district that we would be adding new to the zoning ordinance. As you may recall, at the... At that meeting, I went through a slideshow so as not to take up a lot of time and go back through the slideshow. I had it on your table in front of you, which basically outlines all the key dates that this ordinance was before the planning commission and before the council. Just to back up just a little bit, the master plan was just recently updated, and the master plan called for at least one specific large area of the city to be considered for development only under a planned unit development. And not only planned unit development, but a mixed-use planned unit development. Because the city's zoning ordinance did not have such provisions in the zoning ordinance, it was necessary to introduce this new zoning district to the zoning ordinance so that what we had specified to happen in the master plan could actually be executed at such time as the owners of that property may want to move forward with development. It was designed and written to not only apply to the site that was mentioned in the master plan, but was also written to be used in other areas of town if conditions were such that it made sense to do so. So, you'll see in the way it was written that it wasn't written for a particular property, but written in a way that it could be applied to a number of different properties. The ordinance, as you are considering it for a public hearing tonight, is essentially in the same form as you looked at it at your prior meeting with two minor exceptions. You'll see, in, I think, blue ink in your updated copy, it came to our attention that we needed to add some internal road setback provisions, which has been done. It's a relatively minor amendment. I think it speaks to a new internal road buffer setback of 10 feet and a building setback of 25 feet. In addition to that, there's some minor changes relative to ownership that speaks to... I'm not sure if we had it specified as just a single owner, but I think now it's been changed to a single owner or a unified control for the property at the time of the final planned development and the development agreement on the PUD. Mike Homier, the city's attorney, drafted much of this ordinance. I contributed on some of the design aspects of the ordinance. So, if there's any questions between Mike and myself, we'd be happy to respond to those at the appropriate time.
Well, just as a side note, too, we'll make the necessary modifications to the header to add our new council member and Mayor Protem accordingly, as well as change the date at the bottom to 2016.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comment as they relate to this public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment and generate some discussion within the council if you have any questions or comments for Mr. Wallace or Mr. Homier.
I understand the changes make sense, and I think it was explained well last time we met.
Yeah, the changes that you see in front of you tonight have more to do with setbacks from the internal roadways that were important and not specifically addressed. So, it's... And the ownership issue that will... The ownership issue is still designed to have a unified control over the property and bound to that plan once the plan's been approved.
Good.
I appreciate the care that has been given to this document by Mr. Wallace and Mr. Homier and Mr. Pacha. It was very important to the planning commission, and it was very important to the people who live out in that community. So, thank you for that. Okay. You're looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to add a mixed planned unit development zoning district.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolfisle?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, and that takes us to the city manager's report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first item under the city manager's report is a presentation by our chief of police recognizing several civilians in their life-saving efforts. And Todd, if you could please come forward with your box of goodies.
Well, good evening, city members of council, city manager. Appreciate a few moments this evening. While reviewing and revamping and implementing a new internal awards policy for recognizing our own officers, an act had occurred, and I wanted to also have the ability and the foresight to recognize some of our civilians in the community when they perform exemplary acts. Obviously, we intend to work hand-in-hand with our community, and something we've acknowledged very early on is that we can't do this without members of the community, that we have to be in a partnership. And we certainly would never be able to be everywhere at once. And in reviewing this particular act, found some extremely selfless acts of dedication to a member of the community. So, in the early morning of November 4th, just before 8 o'clock, about 7:45 a.m., Nicole Moore from District Court Probation was arriving to work to do her normal work at the courthouse there. She observed a man collapsed on the ground. Now, this is prior to the courthouse to be in open. There really is no other citizens around, and obviously, she wasn't in the right place at the right time. Seconds mattered. She quickly identified the situation, that this man was in distress and in full arrest, and did what she needed to do, which is immediately summon help and in return, and act as a team. The people that she did summon was and heard her calls for assistance were three members of the circuit court probation and parole. And they responded and administered CPR on this person, and were able to get a pulse and eventually turn him over to the care of North Flight and Cadillac Fire, who responded to the scene. When we caught the intermittent news about this particular victim, who was 57-year-old and from Cadillac, from the city of Cadillac, he... The initial reports were pretty grave. They didn't necessarily expect him to make it. They thought there was going to be a lot of neurological damage. And reported that he was actually blind at the time. When I followed up with it, had one of my officers contact the man, not only was he answering the phone and doing fine, he called himself 98% recovered and he sees fully and has since living a fully normal life as a result of these efforts. This was a man who was declared clinically dead for about five minutes. So, if I can, I would like to present these one at a time, if that's all right with you guys. So, first, I'd like to present a City Cadillac Michigan Police Department hereby awards a citizen's life-saving award to Nicole Moore for your skilled and selfish response to a stranger who fell victim to a cardiac arrest on November 4th, 2015. When you found a man collapsed, you recognized the gravity of the situation, wisely summoned assistance, and continued to work as a team to provide life-saving care for the victim. Your actions undoubtedly saved the life of this person. Thank you. To Charles Kennard, for your skilled and selfish response to a stranger who fell victim to a cardiac arrest on November 4th, 2015. Working in the face of a crisis, you retrieved an AED and assisted resuscitation efforts until qualified medical personnel took over. Your actions undoubtedly saved the life of the Cadillac man. To Brian Potter, for your skilled and selfish response to a stranger who fell victim to a cardiac arrest on November 4th, 2015. You calmly followed your training, applied CPR to the Cadillac residence. Your response and actions undoubtedly saved the life of this Cadillac residence, who has since fully recovered. Thank you. Excuse me while awkwardly... I did invite the victim, and I do see him present, and so I don't want to name him. I did ask that he be named, and he hasn't returned, so intentionally leaving his name out. And to David Koenig, for your skilled and selfish response to a stranger who fell victim to a cardiac arrest on November 4th, 2015. You calmly followed your training and applied CPR to the Cadillac man. Your response and actions undoubtedly saved the life of this Cadillac man, who has since fully recovered. Thank you, David. What I really want to note here is that Mr. Koenig is retired Cadillac Police Department. He's received his training and has... This isn't the first life he's saved. And we have some excellent members of the court staff. These people are all engaged in public service and clearly selflessly gave themselves that night. So, I'm very, very appreciative and very pleased to be able to give these awards. And I look forward to giving other awards to not only members of our own department, also to the community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I... May I take just one quick moment? And I have our newest member of our department, who has just sworn in this afternoon. Can I quickly introduce him to council right now? If this is a good moment to do that? I know it wasn't part of the agenda. But if we could... Ladies and gentlemen, this is Andrew Lathrop of Traverse City. He just began today, and we're hoping that we have him for the next 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Perfect segue to our next item.
I love how you say it.
Yes, yes. Which is, Mayor, members of the city council request for out-of-state training by our chief of police. The chief of police, Todd Golnick, is requesting to attend a 40-hour professional development training entitled "Management of the Small Law Enforcement Agency." It's being presented by the Southern Police Institute at the University of Louisville in Louisville, Kentucky. There are funds available in the department's training budget for this. The training will take place March 14th through the 18th, and it's my recommendation that the training be permitted.
And I do believe that continuous education is very important.
Well, actually, and that's a great facility. I took a week program down there myself when I was with the department here, and they're known for very good training. And it would be a good program.
Great, okay, then we would need a motion?
I'll do the motion, I guess, to allow the chief of police to travel out of state to attend a training session. And if Louisville's playing basketball, maybe you'll get to see a game.
Do we put that in as part of the motion?
No, we'll put it in the motion. That was just a meditation, Mayor.
I know, I know.
And I'd like to be the one to second that.
Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, we also... And the next thing on our agenda this evening is that we have the minutes of several, actually, four different boards and commissions for our review on our own. And that takes us to the second public comment. Again, we'll open the floor, and if anybody would like to come up, limit your time to three minutes. Happy New Year. Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move into good of the order. And this evening, we'll start with councilmember Shippers.
Thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. I look forward to 2016. I'd like to welcome our new council member and the new team for this year. I look forward to doing great things together this year. So, that's... And thanks for volunteering for that Board of Review. Being a schoolteacher, I can't get to those meetings. They don't... The kids don't like it when I'm gone. But thank you so much, and welcome. That's all.
Okay, and then we'll go to councilmember Wolfisle.
Okay, well, I guess what I'd like to say is it's my honor and privilege to be here. This community supported myself and my family for 25 years when I worked for the police department. I retired back in January of 2014, for those of you that don't know that. And I look at this as an opportunity to give back to the community that supported me for such a long time. And I hope that all the years of experience and training that I've had, I've worked in municipal government work here and in other places for a total of 37 years. So, I'm confident that I will bring some abilities to council. I think I make good, level-headed, logical decisions, and it's, again, truly my honor to be here and to be part of this team. So, I look forward to the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Spohman?
Well, I'm looking forward to working with you and the rest of the council moving forward. It's a very exciting and hopeful time for us. Really looking forward to it. I also appreciate the awards ceremony tonight from Todd Golnick in recognizing the folks in the community from the court system that helped save the life of a Cadillac resident nonetheless. And then I have a request for the... Maybe the next agenda. I've had the opportunity to talk to quite a few citizens over the last couple of weeks on a wonderful holiday period, who had a lot of questions about what's happening in the city park and in the pavilion, and where's the parking going to be, and where's the splash pad going to go, and are we buying a building? And I am wondering if we could... You know, I know we've got a lot of really exciting things coming up, and we've had the plans. We've seen them in the past. I know there's changes that get made as we move forward. If we could maybe have a type of a presentation, if the rest of the council is interested in this, of what that big plan is, how the White Pine Trailhead comes to play, the renovation of the pavilion, the whole Heritage Park Plaza area, and what that timeline might be for all those different moves. Right now, the biggest question is, where exactly is that splash pad going to go? And are they moving the shea? And, yeah, where's the parking going to be?
We could do that.
Et cetera, et cetera. And to be frank, you know, I can't answer those questions. I have seen the plans as they've been made and presented, but I think I need a review. And like I said, I know sometimes those plans change. So, if we could... Does that sound good for everyone?
Yeah, it's interesting that you brought that up, because earlier today, I had a conversation with Marcus, and, you know, that's the biggest, most exciting thing that's out in front of us right now. And, you know, when we... We know that as you build the plane, things shift and change. But what I would like us to be able to do is to be proactive in presenting that information, keeping it out in front of people, you know, whether it be on our website or on boards here at the city, so people know what's going on and don't feel like... The left hand doesn't know what the right hand is doing, because it does, so...
Yeah. There's a lot of pieces to it, and you're right. People are just... People are so excited about that splash pad.
Yeah.
So, it's good that they're talking.
Yeah, so I think Marcus is going to talk a little bit more about it, so that'll be good.
And if there's any, yeah, potential crowdfunding opportunities or what type of grants that we're looking for. The only thing that I ask is that you don't do it that first meeting in February. If we can't get this all together for the next meeting, then... Because I don't think I'm going to be here.
Next, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Keith?
Well, I would just like to welcome Matt to be part of us now, and I'm really excited about all this. I really am. And he and I, of course, have some common experience. Mine on the federal level is on here, and maybe that'd be a cool thing for this city, too.
I think it will.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Marcus?
I have a few updates, mayor members of the city council. Uh, I have a few updates, Mayor, members of the City Council. One, uh, a big thank you to, uh, to staff, especially the Public Works. The holiday lighting, I think, was fantastic, uh, this season. I really, really think it, it just dazzled. I know that some of the lights are rather antiquated, and we're gonna have to become creative, uh, next season. Uh, thinking of the big Christmas tree is crying, for instance, a lot of the strains and the lights themselves basically broke, uh, towards the, the end of the holiday season, and we're gonna need to look at either replacing the lights or even looking at a, a different tree possibly as well. But, uh, major kudos to the department. It was really, really great, uh, and, and thank you for having all of that coordinated. Uh, also wanted to mention as well, uh, almost went, maybe not unnoticed, uh, but kinda quiet during the, the two-week sort of holiday period, the Cadillac Chamber of Commerce's leadership class officially announced their project this coming year is going to be their full engagement on the splash pad slash ice rink. It's a hybrid amenity, and I'll be more than happy to talk to City Council and the public more about it, uh, if not in two weeks from now, then at the, the next meeting in February, not the first one, but the, but the second one. Uh, and that being said, I'm also resurrecting, uh, the State of the City report, and, uh, I'm a little hesitant to putting a date on it. I was hopeful to maybe have it ready, uh, at our second meeting in January, but there's still a lot of, uh, sort of final touches to it that I need to, uh, I need to work on, and if I can't have it ready in two weeks from now, then I'll also bring that at the same meeting. Then I'll bring the, um, uh, the, the sort of plans on the, the major capital projects that we're working on, and, and give that update all at once, so that council will have a whole night hearing me talk.
Oh, boy.
Yes, oh, boy.
Listen to, listen to you, even, yeah, he's ready.
That's right. Uh, but in any event, that concludes my comments, other than by saying welcome. Uh, it's great to have you up here.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf File, and, uh, looking forward to a new year and new beginnings and a new council, so.
Well, I could just say, hearing you talk all night will be just like old times.
Thank you. I'm gonna take it.
And that's all he's gonna say about that.
Take that as a good thing.
Yes.
Okay, um, the only other thing that I would add is that, um, I wanna wish everybody a new year, a happy new year, and I, too, am really excited about, um, the new year and the new council, and the projects that we have out in front of us as a city. And I believe that those projects are going to be wonderful collaborative efforts of the people that live and work in this community, and I'm looking forward to that. So, uh, with that, we need to go.
We do need to go into closed session.
Into closed session.
And I do have, uh, a slight modification to the motion.
Okay.
We're removing a couple of things from it. Um, if I may read the, the motion aloud to the city.
Sure.
Uh, so, Mayor, members of the council, at this point, it'd be appropriate to consider our motion, uh, to adjourn to closed session to discuss pending civil litigation in this case of city of Cadillac via Michalite Corp, uh, Wexford County, uh, Court Case Number 14 dash 25602, and to discuss, uh, a confidential, uh, legal opinion with the city attorney, and to invite Jeff Deetland, Director of Utilities, and Bruce Stewart, Director of Public Works and Engineering, as appropriate.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
I'll make the motion to return to open session.
I'll support it.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Wolf File?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. All right.
All right.